Ready?
Yeah.
All right. The hour of six thirty has arrived. I'd like to convene this business meeting of Urbana School District one sixteen. Roll call, please.
Member Hassan Adka.
Here.
Member Or.
Here.
Member Ogalski.
Here.
Member Hall.
Here.
Member Carter's here. Vice President Exum.
Here.
And President Palowski.
Here. I'd like to do one quick public service reminder to everybody present. If you are parked in the middle spaces just to the south of the building or facing the building to the south of us in the same lot.
Or the Bow and Yard.
Those are not districts parking spots and you might get towed. So, just making sure everyone's aware of that. Are there any additions, corrections, or modifications to tonight's agenda? Hearing none. It's time for a citizen statement. So if you would like to make a statement for the board, please fill out a golden rod sheet in the back of the room and hand it to our recording secretary Lori Johnson. First one submitted was from Kristi Lee.
Okay. Hi, my name is Kristi Lee and I'm here to talk to you about the climate and culture in Urbana schools for students with disabilities. Our journey into special education in Urbana schools began in two thousand and two when our daughter Allison, who has Down syndrome, entered preschool. And it continues today as her sister Josie, who also has Down syndrome, begins her middle school years. We believe in inclusive education, having students learn in the general education classroom with peers as much as possible. Allison graduated from Urbana High School in two thousand and seventeen and there were many challenges throughout her journey with USD one sixteen. We looked for the silver linings, advocated for change, and were hopeful that it would lead to better experiences for Josie. Unfortunately, that has not happened. Students with disabilities continue to be excluded and are not welcome in Urbana schools. Have you ever had staff remove your child from a class or a section after only one day because the teacher was not willing to give them a chance? Have you ever had school staff tell you that it would be better for everyone if your child and other children like them were bused to a separate school? Have you ever walked into a classroom to find your child sitting on the floor in a back corner alone while the teacher engages the other students, acting as if your child were not even there? Have you ever had to advocate for your child to be able to participate in things like the homecoming assembly and the parade festivities? Have you ever been told that your child is not welcome to participate in field trips or after-school enrichment activities? Have you ever had to send your child to school every day, knowing their classroom teacher does not want them there? Have you ever been asked to pick up your child from school because the teacher does not want them there? Have you ever attended a back-to-school night where every student was listed on the board with a group except yours? Where every student had a book box to share with their parents, except yours? Have you ever been told that your child did not belong in the hallways, the lunchroom, the classroom? The education of students in Urbana is not valued, students with disabilities, excuse me. Have you ever had school staff tell you that teaching your child reading and math were a waste of time? Have you ever had to advocate and fight to have your child present their assignment in the class for which it was assigned? Have you ever had a teacher tell you that they do not engage with your child because their speech is difficult to understand? Have you ever had to fight for your child to have access to science? Have you ever had to fight to know what your child is working on in school and see their work? Have you ever had to ask multiple times for your child's login information so they could access their work? Have you ever received work packets from school that the class had been working on for weeks? And the only pages completed were the two you did with your child for homework one night? Have you ever looked in your child's classroom binder and found the only pages that were completed were the ones done during the two days that you were present in the classroom? The questions I just asked represent a small sampling of the experiences we have had in Urbana schools and many of these experiences are recurring. Is this what you want for Urbana students? If USD one sixteen is serious about creating a more equitable and inclusive educational environment for all students, you must acknowledge and then change the current practices that enable and perpetuate the exclusion and segregation of students with disabilities. You must acknowledge and then change the current practices that hinder the education of students with disabilities. Urbana students deserve better. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi.
Kristi, can you leave that with us or give the copy to Lori? Or send it to me? Thank you.
Next up is James Loomis.
Good evening. Uh, just, okay. Thank you for making time. I'm not as used to this format, so I appreciate your patience. I'm a little more informal. I'm a parent of a student at Lille. We recently had a meeting last week with the bilingual committee, which unfortunately didn't have enough time to answer all the parents' questions. We were hoping, or at least had been brought up, to have another meeting scheduled. And in all honesty, at least my wife and I feel it would be helpful if there were some board members present. There are some ongoing issues that we feel the board could help resolve. A lot of the bilingual committee's recommendations and information has been frankly biased. Their surveys have been addressed towards the bilingual parents programs, the bilingual parents, sorry, the bilingual programs, parents, children, and staff. They have not surveyed any of the monolingual students, parents, staff, or students. And we're just looking to, you know, kind of be included in this process. So, I mean, I can go into more in-depth conversations, but I don't want to waste the committee's time. I really appreciate you being here and we just appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next up is Katie Loomis. While we wait, if anyone else wishes to make a statement for the board, there are golden rod forms in the back of the room. Just sign your name to it and hand it to our recording secretary Lori Johnson. Thank you.
I wasn't planning on talking, but I might as well say hi. Um, yeah, so we're just, you know, we have a kindergartner, so we're just kind of joining the schools for the first time. It's our first experience, um, with schools, but I guess I work for a nonprofit, so I have a lot of experience with, you know, how do you do community outreach? How do you do change in a community? And what I'm just seeing that's just setting off like alarm bells is, you know, when, you know, they surveyed, well, half the community. They didn't survey the whole community in fact, but half the community. And then when the survey said seventy-five percent don't like the proposal, it said, well, they didn't just understand. And I'm like, well, if people don't understand, then you need more outreach. You need to have more community meetings. You know, if you truly believe this is the best for this community, then take the time, do it right, because there will be so many benefits to bringing everyone along. Because right now, like, I see things and they are creating divisions where they don't need to be. Um, you know, I, we were at this meeting and, you know, what really struck me was how, you know, most of the parents that had come were probably from, you know, people who lived nearby to Lille, it was at Lille School, and were from the monolingual program. And then, you know, the committee kept on, you know, speaking in both Spanish and English and even asked, you know, do we need to continue this? Should we stop? But the thing was, being inclusive is not just speaking two languages. If you have not done the outreach so that the parents were there, because there were maybe two people that I saw that spoke out from the dual-language program, and they both, you know, I don't know if they spoke Spanish at home or not, but the people who really need this program did not appear to be there. Were not having a voice. And so it creates this almost like, I could see this division of like, it's like, okay, it's the like monolingual versus duolingo parents, but really, I don't think that's the division. I feel like it's the lack, it's almost like the committee is creating this division. And I really think that if we had the proper process, you know, maybe there need to be changes. Um, but we need everyone's voice at the table. And, um, and that if thing, if you don't get the response from the community that you want, spend more time. This, you know, it's, if there are issues, they've been there a long time and we should do it right. And, um, and also that, you know, a lot of data is brought up, which is kind of funny because just kind of knowing that area is so full of professors, or not professors, but I know that so many of my neighbors are professors, mention data, show people the data. I, I went, I looked at the school website, I looked for, you know, just Googling it, and most of the information I could find was the news gazette. And like, that's not transparency, that's not allowing people to engage on this, which is, this is our children. We are, you know, care so much about our children. Um, and so I guess I feel, you know, I, I, I see the passion with the committee members, but I feel like they're so tunnel vision, feeling like we need to push this through. And they feel like this is the right choice, but I've seen this again, working for a nonprofit, working with changing legislation, like, you can be shortsighted, you might not be seeing something where you, there could be a better solution or an adjustment, a tweak, or even just the process being different will change how people feel about this change. Um, and that if there could be maybe some oversight from the board to just kind of help them have more of that process, I, I think this will just, you know, whatever the outcome will be, will just be so much better. So, um, I, I thank you very much for your time.
Really appreciate both your comments tonight. Thank you so much. Does anybody else wish to make a public statement before the board this evening? All right. Thank you. Moving on. There will be a call for an executive meeting after tonight's meeting for the purpose of personnel matters essentially. Is there a motion to approve tonight's agenda?
Second.
Let's move to second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We have an agenda. There are no accommodations, recognitions, communications. Student ambassador report. Sorry. One quick thing, there will be no action after tonight's executive session.
Well, we have homecoming coming up. Everybody's very excited for that. We have a whole spirit week full of sporting activities and events to go to. And like, there's dress-up days every day. We have a parade for the first time in a while, which is a big deal. A lot of the sporting teams have floats in that. Very cool. And just this past weekend, we had like a Saturday school situation where a lot of kids could go and clear their attendance in order to attend homecoming, which was very cool of the administration to do, I thought. Otherwise, you know, school started, it's going well.
All right. Thank you, Parker. Our first administrative report tonight is a discussion on the USD one sixteen budget.
Okay. Hi, everyone. This will be my first time presenting the budget to the school district. So I created a presentation to kind of walk you through some of the main points of all of the documents that were provided in the packet to board members and the public. Oh, it does work. I think it worked. Okay. All right. So it's just the intro slide. This is the outline of the presentation that I'm going to review tonight. So I'm going to start out by going over the performance of last fiscal year, just to set the stage. And then we'll go through the budget assumption document, highlights just the biggest moves. And then I'll discuss the ed fund specifically as far as revenue and expenditures. And I'll end with a fund balance summary and then any other questions that you may have about the budget. So to start out, just to go over how we performed for fiscal year twenty-two and where we wound up. The actual revenues exceeded the budget by about eight hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. This was primarily due to the increase in corporate personal property replacement tax above what was budgeted for the year. We were not expecting that. And every single district in the state experienced that increase. And it was almost double what we budgeted. And they're also anticipating that those revenues will remain at that high level for the coming year as well. So that's great news for us. All of our personal property replacement tax dollars go directly into our education fund. And in the documents that you were given, page one of the budget revenue detail has the corporate personal property replacement tax account on it. So you can find that there. It was about three point three million dollars in FY twenty-two that we've received and we're expecting three point five in FY twenty-three. Expenditures for FY twenty-two were underspent by budgeted expectations by one point eight million dollars. This was largely due to unfilled vacancies in the district. So the amount that we spent on subs didn't equate to the amount of salaries and benefits for the positions that we had budgeted in full for. And there was other variances throughout other accounts, but when I analyzed the detail, that was the largest chunk of the reason that our expenditures were underspent from the budgeted figures. And we budgeted a surplus of twenty-two thousand dollars, but actually, we wound up with a surplus of two point seven million dollars, which is pretty remarkable. However, don't get your hopes up too much. It helped improve the ed fund's fund balance, which is really a good thing because we have, we are not meeting our fund balance target according to our board policy. So our board policy is that we should have reserves of twenty-five percent of a ratio of fund balance to revenues of our operating funds, and we're not there. We're getting closer, though. This really helped a lot. And so in our financial profile that ISB uses for us, we're in the review stage. And that's one of the indicators, this is one of the reasons why we're not in the stable stage of the Illinois, the profile, financial profile for school districts. So this was a good move to try to help boost that. And we'll talk a little bit more about fund balance at the end of the presentation. Okay. So now just to walk you through some of the highlights of the budget assumptions document. That's the kind of Word document with a narrative about the major changes to the budget for the year. Property tax revenues are expected to increase by about seven point oh six percent. And this is due to a CPI increase of five percent, which really, the increase in CPI was seven percent, but tax caps limits it to five. But we, the other reason that that increase will be larger this year is because there's an expected new construction amount of over thirty million dollars in equalized assessed value coming onto the tax rolls for this coming levy year. And the majority of that property is the Gather complex. That's off of West University on the other side of Lincoln. So I talked to the township, the Cunningham Township assessor about it, kind of making sure that those numbers were pretty solid. And we seem to be in pretty good shape as far as our tax levy. And to give you a little bit of perspective, the last year's new property was around six million, seven million. So this is really a substantial increase. And with tax caps, the only time we really get a bump in, over last year's tax revenue besides the increase in the CPI is when there's new property. And it also helps drive our tax rate back down a little bit, which is good for Urbana. So all of the taxing districts in Urbana will hopefully see a slight decrease in our tax rates and kind of make us a little more comparable to Champaign and Savoy. Maybe not Savoy, but maybe Champaign. So, moving on, evidence-based funding. We were provided with additional tier-two funding in FY twenty-three. The tier funding portion of the increase in EBF is around three hundred and thirty-six thousand dollars. There was, but we actually are going to realize an increase in EBF of around three hundred and sixty thousand. So that other difference is due to increases in enrollment. So you get EBF as based on enrollment, but also other factors. Page one of the budgeted revenues detail has our EBF funding on, on the page. And total evidence-based funding for FY twenty-three is budgeted at eleven million, six hundred ninety-seven thousand dollars. And then the other major increase in revenues for the coming fiscal year, which I went into some detail in the assumptions document about, was food service revenues. So with COVID, our meal counts were down. We were not offering breakfast in the classroom. We were not, we were offering only two meal choices. So we've resumed full-service food service according to our contract. So there's been four entree options offered with elementary lunches, breakfast in the classroom at all schools. They're hopefully going to get the à la carte and other things open, but those don't bring in revenue to us. But just to entice students to eat school lunch is important because the more meals we serve, the more reimbursement funding we get from the state. But we utilized FY nineteen meal counts, which was our last full year of full-service operations. We used those meal counts, applied them as an estimate to FY twenty-three meal reimbursement rates to use, which realized a one point one million dollar increase in food service revenues for the coming year. So that, that's great for the district. So helped offset some of the other increases in costs, which we'll talk about next. All right. So the big ones, salary increases averaged three point eight nine percent with a total cost of one point four million dollars. That three point eight nine is detailed out on item number nine, where the different categories of staff, you can see the different percentage increases that were applied to those groups. Health insurance premiums was the biggest hit to the budget, which we all are aware of and we've received updates about in previous board meetings. The insurance premiums were quoted to increase thirty-eight point two five percent with a total cost to the district increase of one point seven seven million. The district's cost of health insurance premiums is based on eighty-eight percent of the highest cost plan, according to the collective bargaining agreement. So our cost actually increased fifty percent, even though the premiums only increased thirty-eight point two five. So that was a big hit and took a big chunk of our, our new money that's coming from that tax levy increase, so. Energy costs are also a big unknown at the moment. I worked with our energy broker to try to get some estimates, but, you know, it's anybody's guess at this point. It's very unstable right now. They were quoting a pretty high increase, like almost a hundred percent on top of what our budget was last year. But I did some analysis of the last six months of energy bills compared them to the prior six months, and it was more between one point four and one point six percent increase. So I budgeted a fifty percent increase on top of the current budget. So, I don't know if that made sense, what I just said, but I think it's reasonable until we have another year of history to, to adjust those budgets further. So hopefully, we'll, we're still seeing the energy bills that I'm approving are very high compared to prior years. And then again, just to reiterate that the savings for the school resource officer of eighty-two thousand dollars over the prior year is included in this budget. The indoor aquatic center loss contribution is two hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars for the coming fiscal year. That is quite increased from the prior year of a hundred and eighty thousand. And that's primarily because the pool was closed and had reduced service for COVID. And so they didn't have as many costs, but now with a full year of operations, again, it's back up. So, and we kind of pay that in arrears at the end of each year, so that was for last year's full year of operations.
Katie, can I ask a question?
Yes, please.
When you said full year, you mean not being open for the summer, though? The months minus?
So this actually still includes, because it's based on the park district's fiscal year, which ended April thirtieth.
Okay.
So hopefully, we'll realize some savings from having been closed this past summer when we pay next year's bill.
Okay. I just wanted you to clarify that.
No, I'm glad you asked that. Facility sales tax, now I'm going to talk a little bit about, moving on and talking a little bit more about like our construction and the budgets and other funds, moving off of the ed fund. Facility sales tax receipts are anticipated to produce about four point two million in revenue. Two million of this, though, is then transferred to debt service to make our payments on the twenty-ten and twenty-twenty-one bond series. So that is one of the agreements that we made with the board to earmark some of our facility's sales tax revenues for bond payments for larger bond issues to do projects. And then the remaining amount is right now earmarked for actually paying for some of the construction at Thomas Paine, which we can, I detailed out in the budget assumptions document, all of the different sources that, that are paying for the remaining portion of that project. Around sixteen million of that project is going to be paid for in this fiscal year, but also really spilling into FY twenty-four since the construction will happen over the summer. So we'll probably be paying bills into July, August, September of next year as well. But we budgeted the full amount in the current year to pay that full sixteen million that's remaining due. And then at the end of next fiscal year, we'll analyze the remaining amount to spend and we'll budget for that. This is the summary page that was provided in the board packet. It just has all of our district's funds and the projected beginning fund balance and projecting ending fund balance for the district. You can see that the education fund in total, which includes ed fund and grant funds, is expected to have a surplus of fund balance of two hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars with the way that the FY twenty-three budget has come together. And beyond that, the, the funds that have negative fund balance are primarily due to the Thomas Paine project, which we're expecting to spend those out. So that's foreseeable and expected to spend those funds. And then just a quick summary highlight, I think we focus a lot on the education fund. It's really our bread and butter and it's really where we spend the most of our money. And so the sources of our revenues, sources for the ed fund are listed here with about seventy percent of our funding coming from local funds. And most of that is property tax dollars, but also corporate personal property replacement taxes in that figure as well. The state funding is primarily EBF and then other federal funding, various things, including some of that food service revenue. And then on the expenditure side, over seventy percent of our budget is for salaries, another eleven percent is for benefits. So the largest chunk of our budget for, on the expense side, is for salary and benefits for staff. for staff. Which is not a surprise. That's, most organizations have that structure, so. Then, this chart might be a little bit hard to read, but perhaps if you have the PDF, you can zoom in on some of those little tiny numbers. But this is just showing those in a picture format, the ending projected fund balance. So at the end of this fiscal year, where we could potentially see our fund balances by fund. And you can see that we still do have a projected negative fund balance in our operating, operations and maintenance fund and in IMRF. So those are funds that we need to continue to work on, kind of progressively, to work on increasing them over time. It's not usually something you can do overnight, and they've had negative fund balances for a while. And you can adjust the tax levy some to address that, but it's just a work in progress. And these numbers do not include the TIF III set aside, they do not. This is without that included in the numbers. So that's actually one of the reasons the O&M is negative, because really they have a positive ending fund balance if you net it with the TIF III surplus, but that is, it's really set aside for that purpose, so their operating surplus is negative. So beyond that, I didn't have any other details to share on fund balance, but I really am happy to entertain any questions. Hopefully I can answer them tonight, otherwise I'll get back to you as soon as possible.
Board members, any questions about the budget? I don't have a question, so a statement, I think that our, in terms of where our fund balance is set, it's been the best I've seen in years.
Yes.
Usually those numbers on the negative side are, were much bigger. We had a much bigger problem with O&M in the past. I'm really happy to see that negative number decrease and, and seeing the ed fund balance increase. So, yeah, last year was a really good year for us, so, so thanks for sharing the good news.
I have a question. So with the Thomas Paine project and what is budgeted, how much is the actual cost of that project versus what is budgeted? Because like a sheet of plywood in the last year cost double what it did a year ago. So I can't imagine it's coming in at what we estimated, unless we estimated 200% more than what it actually costs.
The bid for construction was 19.4 million. So that's the price that the contractor agreed to do the contract for, and that included contingency. So if the pricing for materials comes in high, that's on them. So we're still at this 19.4 million, because that's what the contractor agreed in bid. So, and that does include contingency, which we have started dipping into, and that may be part of the reason why. But Randy isn't here to comment on the status of the project, but right now we've only spent about $3 million, 3.4 of the project, because they've really only just done a lot of the groundwork and stuff, and a lot of the remaining construction will be done in coming, this coming summer.
Yeah, I mean, last, last time I was at Yankee Ridge, we came in under budget, we were able to parlay the savings from, from that into the Thomas Paine project. Yeah, I wouldn't count on the same thing coming out of the Thomas Paine project, considering the inflationary landscape we have now.
Well, and then, Robbie, you bring up a good point, because that 19.4 million, some of that is the contractor, but then there's also included in that total dollar amount is owner's costs, which are paid directly by the district. And those we won't have nearly as much control over. I mean, you're talking about safety surfacing for the playground or things like, I mean, just really, there's a, quite a long list of things. Technology improvements for the building, and there's a long list of owner's costs. I think it's around $2 million of the total project budget. And so that could be an area where we don't have that locked-in pricing that we do for the remaining construction contract, that you could see some variance.
And I was going to add, on Randy's behalf, the contingency dips, you said that we've been dipping into the contingency costs, have not been related to supply and demand. They've been like snafus in the project. So we had to move a wall, and it was the weekend before the huge rainstorm.
Oh, no.
Several classrooms got water in them. And then we had to quickly, kind of do some things very quickly to shore up the wall and make sure the roof was repaired enough where we wouldn't get water in. So it's been those kind of contingencies, not materials yet.
Any other questions from board members? Brian?
I actually have a comment. So some of our public commenters last week talked about different salary increases and the, the amount that's here is overall. So just for transparency, I did ask Katie to provide me with information to be able to break that out, so we could look at admin spending and all the things that were brought up. And I just, for the public, wanted to say that admin increase came in below what the board approved at 2.12%. So I really appreciate Katie sending me all the information, she sent it very quickly. And in a year where inflation was 9, 10%, I think, you know, a 2.12% increase is a pretty reasonable thing. So hopefully that answers the questions that were brought up in public comment last week.
Sorry, I, I just remembered something, and I'm sorry if you already mentioned it, please repeat it, because you went fast, but the...
Sorry.
We do set aside money for the TRS potential penalties every year.
Yep.
What happens if we, if penalties are going to be incurred, do they have to be done within a certain, that fiscal year for the, okay?
Yeah.
If we don't receive word of any of those penalties, then where does that money go? Do we reabsorb it, and where do we reabsorb it?
It just gets, it's in ed, it's budgeted in the ed fund.
Okay.
So it would wind up in ed fund, fund balance if we didn't spend it.
Okay.
Yep.
And so far, so good?
Yeah, I mean, I was going to say, that's on page one of the expenditures, budget detail. It's like maybe a third of the way down the page. And we have a budget of $50,000 set aside for that. We spent $45,000 last year.
Oh, wow, okay.
Yep.
So not that much left over.
Thank you.
Yep, of course. And I did, I know my discussion's done, but we didn't specifically call out adult ed on the agenda, but we wanted to give Shawna time to review her budget too, so I, I didn't want you to move on to the next item without giving Shawna a chance to share adult ed's portion of the budget as well.
I'll give the board one more opportunity to ask questions of Katie, and then we'll move on to Shawna's presentation. Is there any more questions? All right, well, thank you, Katie.
Thank you.
Shawna.
Good evening. I, you have the information in front of you, and I see that it's projected up there. Thank you. I'm just going to highlight a few things, since these is very similar to past years. As you know, we're primarily funded through a variety of grants. I just wanted to highlight a couple of things. The Illinois Community College Board, which provides the bulk of our funding, we got an increase this year over last year of $50,000, 50,066 actually. So that was really good news. That's due to the number of students we've been serving and our performance as well. We also had an increase of our United Way funding by $10,000. They actually contacted me and said that they were so happy with our CNA program, and they knew we could use probably some additional dollars to support it. And they had a little extra money for this year, and they wondered how, they wanted me to send an email on how we could use that. And I sent it, and they said, great, you get $10,000 extra dollars. So that was very encouraging. We also, for our Secretary of State grant, we applied for, that's almost twice as much as we had last year, we had about $4,200 or something. We applied for additional funds so that we could hire a reading teacher in addition to the math teacher we already had. So as a reminder, if you, if you weren't here for last year's presentation, that is a grant that we have with Salt and Light, a partnership we have with Salt and Light. We write the grant through the Secretary of State Literacy Program, and we provide instruction for their employees, and they pay their employees their regular hourly rate for the hours that they are in class with our instructors. So we provided math instruction in the past, and we wanted to be able to provide reading as well. And so we wrote for extra money, and we were granted that extra money. The other thing I just wanted to bring your attention to, last year I had budgeted in money for our advanced ESL tuition. So basically what happens if students come in for ESL instruction and they test too high, we can't fund their class through ICCB. And so we offered an advanced course where we really helped them work on those higher level skills, but they had to pay for it. This year, because our funding went up overall, I'm able to, and they changed some of the rules on how we can test, using some different tests. So I'm able to provide class for those, that group of students without charging them any funding. So that was very exciting and really happy to be able to do that and expand the population that we serve. The other thing that we started just this year, you'll see line seven where it says testing revenue. While that's a small amount, I'm very excited by the partnership. It's a partnership with Regional Planning Commission, where we are offering testing for the tests that we have to use for our ICCB funding. We are, WEOWA also requires it, and so we are testing their customer, their adult customers can come and schedule a testing session with us. And we offer the testing at a, really in expenses like $25, we charge them per customer. But it solves a problem that they had, where they were having difficulty man, having the staff available to test their customers and get new people involved in the WEOWA programming. And we have the capability to offer that. So we were able to expand that partnership, which was, is really exciting, and I think will speak to some things that we're also trying to put in place as we move forward, including offering the testing for Parapros, Dr. Franklin. So that our, we can hopefully recruit and be able to offer tests to people who want to be TAs in the district. So we're looking at establishing that as well. So that's what that line is about. Those are the highlights and changes from last year. Are there any questions?
Board members, any questions about the adult education budget? Robbie?
Yes, I have a question. So I don't know the exact number, but I seem to recall that if this building we're in right now gets sold, adult education gets something like 20%? Something like that?
Well, we own half.
Split, 50%?
Yeah.
Okay, 50%, so you should probably have that in your budget.
Well...
Unless you don't plan to sell this in the next year.
Well, it, it kind of gets transferred to the new building, basically.
Oh.
So we are going to, which is why Shawna's kind of hesitating, we are going to put together an intergovernmental agreement, we've started working on it with Susan. Because of the costs that the district is putting into renovating the new space for adult ed, and they're going to have no costs moving in, we're taking over their cleaning. So we're going to have the cleaning for both buildings. So Shawna has graciously, we're going to enter into a conversation around not, the district, or adult ed not recouping the majority of that 50%. And we're going to talk about what a reasonable amount would be, so, with our attorneys.
Yeah, really good question. Any other questions? All right, I guess that's it. Thank you so much, Shawna.
Thank you so much, Shawna.
All right, before we move on to the next item, I'd like to recognize Anna Seaman for running our cameras tonight. So thank you once again. Administration report 10 dot 2, the upcoming Board of Education elections. So yeah, so today is the first day that people are allowed to circulate petitions for the upcoming election. So I asked administration to update our website to inform the public on how to run for school board. So I'm going to turn it over to John Gudsmur, who did, and, who did that for us, along with Katie.
Yep, sure. And Catherine, Catherine did most of the work on the website. So this has all of the information that links to the county clerk's website at the top, which is where all the forms are that need to be filled out, and then all of the timing and filing periods. Down at the bottom is the map. In the past, we had districts that were kind of explained by street boundaries, because we redid them at the block level this year. You can still zoom in on the map to find where you live, but the street boundary explicit descriptions are not in there. So, but you can find your address in there on the map. So going back up to the top, we'll click through the county clerk's website. Once you get there, if you scroll down, there's the "I want to run for office" button. And then if you click on that, this has all of the information and forms that you need to fill out to run for the school board. And I'm having a little trouble seeing there, but the school district one should be in there, I believe. Yep. Okay, I'm sorry. Yep. So once you click on that, that has your petition, that you can get your names to run for school board election, and then turn that into the county clerk, and they'll get you on the ballot. We've talked to the county clerk and verified that all of the map and term information's correct, so.
Board members, any questions or comments?
I think there's, oh, sorry, Robbie, I didn't mean to interrupt. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, if you could announce what the filing date is then, it's 90 days from today, I assume.
It's in December, I can't remember the exact date, it's early December, is when the start of filing is?
Yeah, 14th or 15th.
But, okay, we'll make sure the website's updated with that prominently displayed. Any, Anne?
Yeah, I, I was trying to find the link. I, I seem to recall that the Illinois Association of School Boards also has materials for potential candidates, but I should have looked earlier before tonight to see if it was accessible to non-members, you know, to first-time filers, but I can get back to you on that, because I saw paperwork. I mean, this stuff makes sense to people who've already run, but sometimes there's a lot of questions that people have if they've never done it before, you know? And so, I mean, I can come back at the next meeting and provide us that.
And the petitions for Urbana are different, because we have sub-districts, so you have to make sure you fill in the right...
Yeah.
...number for where you live in the form that you circulate, and all of that, so.
Yeah.
We should be careful when we...
Along those lines, a pointer for people wanting to run, the candidate's guide is the thing you need to look at. There it is over there. But then look for the Board of Education section, and that will tell you all the documents you have to download and, and fill out.
I was curious, have we, I didn't totally see it right away, but each sub-district, also some are two-year term, some are four-year, are those listed in the sub-districts?
Yes. And we double-checked that the city had that information.
Okay.
It's tagged.
Good. All right.
All right, any other questions or comments? Thank you for so quickly putting it together, Catherine and John, really, really appreciate it, that was quick work. Yeah, go ahead, Lori.
Four-year term is sub-district three, four, five, and seven.
Can you show us on the map, Tom? If the numbers are a little different than they were before.
Yeah, we really should make sure that the, the numbers are prominently displayed on the map if possible.
We'll get the numbers and the district terms on there as well.
And then two-year, of course, then would be sub-district one, two, and six.
Okay. Any, one more shot at questions or comments? All right, thank you, thank you all very much. Moving on to our consent action item agenda, we have the minutes for the August 23rd business meeting, the September 6th, 7th, 8th, 9th, and 12th special meetings, and the September 13th District Parent Teacher Advisory Meeting. 11 dot 2, we have bills and checks, ed fund bills for $1.1 million. O&M fund bills for $147,000. Transportation fund bills for $917. Working cash bonds for $3.9 million. Tort for $23,600. Life safety levy for $138,000. Payroll and benefits for $3.6 million. Urbana adult education for $73,000. Now, there are a list of personnel items to be approved tonight. 11 dot 4, our inter-fund loans, from O&M fund to working cash fund for $500,000, IMRF to working cash for $200,000, and tort to working cash for $200,000. 11 point 5 is a resolution authorizing and directing the sale or disposal of personal property in accordance with state law. Is there, does anyone wish to remove any one of these items from the consent agenda? Hearing none, the, the chair will entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Okay.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Member Hassanadke?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Orr?
Yes.
Member Ogelski?
Yes.
Member Carter votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Palassi?
Yes. Now to our individual action items. Yes. Uh, now to our individual action items, uh, twelve point one are gifts. The Urbana High School golf team received the following donations from Greg Barbara Babcock, two hundred dollars. Specialized Automotive Incorporated, a hundred and eighty dollars. First Federal Bank, two hundred dollars worth of Titleist golf balls. Luanne Meyer donated cost, classroom supplies for kindergarten through fifth grade and games for indoor recess in honor of her daughter Coral, who was a former Lille student. The Urbana High School Bandroom Expansion Project received an anonymous donation of ten thousand dollars. Wow. Uh, is there a motion to, uh, receive these gifts?
I move to receive these gifts and send gracious thank you letters.
Uh, any further discussion? Uh, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Twelve dot two, uh, fiscal year twenty-three, Urbana School District and Adult Education Budget Resolution. Is there a motion to approve the agenda, approve the budgets that were presented to us over the past two meetings?
Still moved?
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? A roll call, please.
Member Hassan Adka?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Orr?
Yes.
Member Ogalski?
Yes.
Member Carter votes yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Palaskey?
Yes. Uh, twelve point three is our press plus one oh nine that we, uh, reviewed in a prior meeting. Uh, is, is there a motion, uh, to approve the updated rewritten, uh, board policies? Still moved? Is there a-
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Uh, hearing none, a roll call, please.
Member Hassan Adka?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Orr?
Yes.
Member Ogalski?
Yes.
Member Carter, yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Palaskey?
Yes. Uh, twelve point four is a bill of sale. Uh, John's got a request for a bill of sale for, uh, from purchasing items from unit four surplus personal property. Do you mind to give it? Yeah.
Yep, so these are, they, uh, were upgrading their phone systems and these are, uh, existing phone systems that are compatible with our district phone systems, including some of the newer systems that we're just putting into the buildings, uh, these past few months.
Uh, thank you for that context. Is there a motion to approve this resolution?
Still moved?
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? This takes a roll call vote, too, please.
Member Hassan Adka?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Orr?
Yes.
Member Ogalski?
Yes.
Member Carter, yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
President Palaskey?
Yes. Uh, there are, there will be a call for, uh, Thursday at six PM for a special meeting related to student discipline. And there is a call for, oh, sorry, wrong page. Uh, Superintendent's Report.
Hi. So, um, I wanna start off with a celebration. So I don't know, Shawna left already, but we have two very new, recent retirees from the adult ed program. They both have retired in the last couple of weeks. Um, Donna Clark on the left from Urbana Adult Ed, um, has been Assessment Center Coordinator and, um, is, this was kind of her workspace every day. Um, so she's retiring after thirty-three years of service. Um, Carol Sutherland is currently, um, Shawna's administrative assistant, but she's held many different roles at adult ed. Um, and she recently retired with twenty-nine years of service and she's moving to Arkansas and living with her sisters. So we wanna wish Donna, um, on the left and Carol on the right, uh, our, send them our best wishes. They'll be missed. Um, we had a nice celebration here in the board room for them on Friday night. We got to see a lot of great people like David Akak and John Muirhead and lots of folks were here, um, to celebrate Donna and Carol. So we wish them all the best. They'll be missed. Um, our Tiger Marching Band is right now in the middle of the, uh, the CU Band Fest, um, with Centennial and Central, so we're kinda missing that. But, uh, we do wanna give them a shout out, um, for winning first place, um, in class, best music and best percussion at the Sage City Marching Band Invitational this weekend. So, and congrats to TMB. Um, we've linked the performance there, so when this goes out, um, people can watch the performance tomorrow on the, through the board update. I just wanna give a shout out to Brian. He has really been sending lots of photos for cross-country. So, you know, the cross-country meets are like seven, eight o'clock in the morning on Saturday, so I'm not making those. But we appreciate the comp, the, the pictures and we love to be able to celebrate these young folks. Um, John, if you could click forward. Um, so the UMS, uh, cross-country team, they have just, boys and girls are off to a great start this year. So, um, the boys' cross-country team plays first, um, on Saturday and the girls' team plays second at the UMS Run with the Tigers meet over the weekend. So congratulations to both groups. Um, and then we also have a, a great Thomas Paine cross-country group. Um, and they actually had a meet this, uh, weekend as well. Um, and they participated in the youth run before the UMS meet. And, um, there were several runners there who, who earned, um, PRs for the, for their mile, or two-mile run. So congratulations to them. That's a nice feeder into our UMS program, so great job, Thomas Paine. Um, we have a couple of our young people. Um, I know last time we recognized a couple of our African-American students, uh, who are gonna be, um, being recognized for scholarships. And then we have two additional students, Adina and Alistair, um, who are being, uh, recognized as semifinalists for the National Merit Scholarship Award. These are both, um, TMB. Um, Alistair is actually a drum major and Adina's in the band. So we will be recognizing them at TMB2B on Friday the thirtieth, uh, so come on out. They're gonna be performing at, um, our home field and we will, uh, give them both a shout out and a certificate that night and recognize their, um, National Merit Scholarship semifinalist recognition. Uh, we also want to recognize one of our own, um, UMS Student Engagement Advocate, Brandon McFarland. Um, he works at UMS. He is a, uh, you know, a, a longstanding, uh, member of our community. His parents have been really involved. He coaches baseball. Um, he's been at UMS for a long time. And so he was named, um, our only rec honorary this year for the Forty Under Forty, um, by the Central Illinois Business Magazine. Um, and they will be having a big luncheon. We've had several of our, um, Urbana people over the years that have been recognized, um, with this award. So congratulations to Brandon. Muth Bosch is coming up. Um, I think it's this weekend. Is that right? It's, oh, yes, September twenty-third and twenty-fourth. Um, if you watched Muth Bosch last year, uh, it was, um, virtual. So we're looking forward to, um, seeing them in person this year at the Cobb Auditorium. Um, you can purchase tickets at the door. Parker mentioned Homecoming, so, uh, right now we don't have all the details about the parade, but, um, there are a lot of activities happening next week, uh, related to Homecoming. The game, even though we're not playing vars, a varsity game on Friday night, we are still, um, going to be supporting our JV players, uh, Monday night, um, for their game against Central. Um, and then as, as, uh, Parker mentioned, there are activities for the rest of the week, so. There are also, uh, during the, um, football game on Monday night, Kona Ice will be there to, as a support for the football boosters, so please come out and enjoy some Kona Ice. If it is warm like it was today, people will be buying a lot of Kona Ice. Um, our virtual, first virtual family forum of the year is scheduled, also scheduled for next week. Um, a welcome back and, um, year overview. Um, I believe Mrs. Webster, who facilitates and organizes this event, is sending out a Google Doc so parents can put in questions. Um, this is kind of that year in a glance or overview meeting that we always have where people, a lot of new parents tend to, uh, join, uh, these sessions and they wanna know a little bit about curriculum. And, you know, they ask a lot of questions about our policies and procedures. So, um, join us virtually and the Zoom link will also be in the board update tomorrow. And I mentioned this, but this is the flyer. Uh, we've been talking about doing this for a couple of years and COVID kind of impacted our ability to get this off the ground. So we're excited to be able to celebrate and do the, uh, fall recognition for families with Bring Your Family to School Day. So Bring Your Family to School Day is October third. Um, many of the schools have already planned activities and we have created a, um, a flyer. This flyer, as well as we'll be sharing out what each school is offering and what they're doing. Because every school is kinda doing their own thing, so. This is not a replacement for parent-teacher conferences or anything like that. We just wanted to stress. Um, it's very similar to what we're, we've been doing in February with NAPIT. Is you come in, you get to observe, you can walk around. Um, sometimes the schools will offer, uh, breakfast or, uh, little stations that'll be set up. But it's basically an opportunity for you to come, especially our new families. It's a great time for you to come and see school happening during the school day. But I do wanna stress it isn't a time to ha, try to have one-on-one meetings with parents, um, with, uh, the teachers, so. And upcoming dates are also in our, uh, agenda. And also here, Friday is our First Staff Development Day, so we're looking forward to that. We also have FOIA's, um, smart, where you gonna read them, Paul? Did you want me? Um, Smart Procure, all current employee-staff contact information. Chad Anderson, the painting project at three oh three East Fair Lawn. Contract documents, certified payroll, emails, notes, meeting minutes, uh, discussing painting at three oh three East Fair Lawn. That is actually the Comcast building and we basically did most of our own painting. I think this person thought maybe we contracted out and had a big, um, bill or something, but we did most of our painting on our own. Um, Joseph Schmidt, all employ, employment application materials, including applications, cover letters, resumes, recommendation letters, and any additional documents submitted by Adriana Ochoa, Choa, in English and in Spanish for all positions applied for and hired for within Urbana School District System. And those have all been met.
Board reports. See, we have a board report this evening. All right, uh-
Sorry, I just wanna add one note, um, to my question about, um, the ISB, uh, website. Ravi just pointed out to me. I'm sorry I overlooked this. Thank you, Ravi. On the web link that, um, John and Catherine put together for the elections, it, there is a link to the Illinois Association of School Boards on the left where it says information for school board candidates. And it takes you straight to the ISB website and it's open to the public. You don't have to be a member to get information about, you know, potential candidates. So thank you for that, Ravi, but it's for anybody else who's interested.
Great. Uh, at this time, the board would entertain a motion to go into closed session for the purpose of personnel discussion.
Second.
A roll call, please.
Member Hassan Adka?
Yes.
Member Hall?
Yes.
Member Orr?
Yes.
Member Ogalski?
Yes.
Member Carter, yes. Vice President Exum?
Yes.
And President Palaskey?
Yes. Uh, we are, the board is now in closed session, so we'll, we'll wait to convene until, uh, the room is empty.